If you please rise for our pledge of allegiance, we'll get on with our meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the true government of this land, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, would you call a roll, please?
Deputy Mayor, please?
I am present.
Deputy Mayor Ziegler.
Here.
Councilmember Beagle.
Here.
Councilmember Gatchel.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Resnick.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Forum present.
Thank you very kindly. Mr. Brown, do you have any changes or additions to the agenda tonight as presented, sir?
Mayor Henley, I have no changes whatsoever, sir.
Thank you. Any from the council? We have our first presentation for the evening, which would be the Oaths of Office for Mayor Richard Ziegler, Councilmember Patrick Beagle, Councilmember Nicholas Kennedy, Councilmember Thomas Resnick, our Library Board Trustee Kristi Courier, and Library Board Trustee Allison Worden. So if our guests of honor, our judges, would come on up, we can... Are we doing this all at once, or individually?
We're going individually, sir.
Individually, okay, that's what I like. So why don't we have Deputy Mayor take his oath of office?
All right, you ready?
Yeah.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Richard E. Ziegler, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Wixom, Oakland County, Michigan, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties and responsibilities of the office of mayor to the best of my ability. According to the Wixom Charter, Section 3.6, all terms shall commence at 12 noon on January 1st for following elections. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Next, how about Councilman Patrick Beagle?
Judge Law. I don't know who he was standing up for.
Raise your right hand. I, Patrick Beagle, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Wixom, Oakland County, Michigan, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties and responsibilities of a city council member according to the best of my ability.
Okay.
I've been waiting for this opportunity.
Yeah.
Raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, Nicholas Kennedy, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Wixom, Oakland County, Michigan, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties and responsibilities of a city council member according to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Councilman Resnick.
Raise your right hand, please, repeat after me. I, Thomas Resnick, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Wixom, Oakland County, Michigan, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties and responsibilities of a city council member according to the best of my ability.
Kristen. This is our Library Board Trustee Kristi Courier.
Raise your right hand. I, Kristi Courier, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Wixom, Oakland County, Michigan, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties and responsibilities of a library board trustee according to the best of my ability.
Yes, Allison. Allison Worden.
Please raise your right hand. I, Allison Worden, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Wixom, Oakland County, Michigan, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties and responsibilities of a library board trustee according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Everybody was recently elected with us here.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't we want to fight and give them some paper?
Yeah, yeah.
It's like he's done this before.
Okay. The ladies up there? That's pretty good.
Next, we will turn the mayor over to Mayor-elect Richard Ziegler to assume the chair of the meeting for a portion.
Thank you. This point on the agenda is the recognition of Mayor Kevin W. Henley for his service as mayor and councilmember for the City of Wixom. And the first item is I'll be joining you to read a couple of letters into the record. First letter is from Rick Snyder, Governor of the State of Michigan. Dear Mayor Kevin W. Henley, it is my distinct honor to recognize you for your many years of public service to the citizens of the City of Wixom and the State of Michigan, and to congratulate you on your transition into retirement. Having served Wixom diligently for ten years, you leave the city positioned for a bright and sound economic future. As Wixom's mayor and member of Wixom's Downtown Development Authority, you have been a champion for economic development. As you look back on your career, I hope you take pride in knowing that your job affected the well-being of your fellow citizens. Your efforts have truly made Michigan a better place to live, work, and raise family. Please accept my gratitude for your outstanding services, and best wishes for your continued health and happiness in the years ahead. Signed by Governor Rick Snyder. The second one reads as follows, to Kevin Henley. Dear Kevin, congratulations on your retirement from the City of Wixom. Thank you for your sixteen years of public service. Working in local government involves hard work, personal sacrifice, and a strong commitment to public service and your community. On behalf of the people of the State of Michigan, I thank you for your years of dedicated service. I wish you all the best as you begin your retirement. Sincerely, Debbie Stadman, United States Senator. Next, we have several dignitaries here that would like to make presentations here tonight, this evening. I'd like to introduce Senator Mike Kowal and his wife, Oakland County Commissioner Eileen Kowal, to make a presentation.
This is not my wife. We're always geniuses.
Clint Kesto is here with him.
Eileen would have been here. She's taken her daughter back from the Air Force, flying back, and she sends her best wishes, and I know the county commissioner puts something together for you when she'll be coming up next. Just a personal note for myself, you've been, all of you, around the front lines of government, and, you know, people come over here into the city, and they walk right in, and they're in your office, and they're talking about the garbage collection, roads, neighbors' dogs coming over and using their yards for whatever.
Oh, yeah.
And as a former supervisor in White Lake, I can tell you I know exactly what that's like. It's a very difficult job to do it with style and grace, and you've accomplished that. So for myself, as a former supervisor slash mayor, I commend you for what you do. But let me read a little bit of this, I'm gonna let Clint read the other part. But the first time you've been introduced is my wife.
I hope the last is not.
Me too. Let it be known, so with great pleasure, I extend this distinguished legislative tribute as an expression of my thanks and best wishes to Mayor Kevin Henley upon the occasion of his retirement from the City of Wixom. This tribute recognizes the professionalism and commitment to excellence he has exhibited throughout his career and the lasting positive impact he has had upon the people and the community of Wixom. Mayor Kevin Henley began his career in the public service for the City of Wixom as a councilman, working on city council for six years before being elected as mayor. As Wixom's mayor and member of Wixom's Downtown Development Authority, he has always been a champion for economic development. Mayor Henley was instrumental in the city's participation in economic programs and incentives such as Oakland County's One-Stop Shop Ready Program. This has enabled the city to revitalize the vacant grounds of the former Ford Wixom plant into space for new companies such as General Trailer, Menards, the mega store we have, At Home Retail, and the Duluth Trading Company Store. Throughout Mayor Henley's tenure through his career, Wixom was recognized repeatedly for working to foster entrepreneurial growth and completing municipal improvements throughout the community, greatly enhancing the quality of life for its residents.
And just before I get to that, I just want to make a couple comments. It's been great working with you, Mayor Henley, but really when you look at the City of Wixom and where it was to where it is today, you have to, thanks to the staff, thanks to the council, and especially thanks to the leadership of the mayor to bring in this economic development, this revitalization, more people to the area, more families, and it really has a lot to do with the leadership at the top. So we want to thank you for being part of Michigan's comeback, and especially in this area. And, here we go, and you have a wonderful family, and Kevin is a dedicated family man who is always appreciative of the unwavering support of Linda, who's his wife, who we saw here today, of over thirty years. Together, they raised two children, Eric and Michelle, welcomed a daughter-in-law and son-in-law into their family, and are the proud grandparents of two grandchildren, Griffin and Hartley. Are they here? They are here, supporting grandpa. With his civic duties concluding, Kevin looks forward to spending more time with his loved ones. Mayor Henley has been an outstanding elected leader of Wixom, and the community is well-positioned for continuing success. And in special tribute, therefore, this document is signed and dedicated to honor Mayor Kevin Henley as he celebrates the conclusion of his civic service, making all of our admiration and warmest wishes for continued success in every endeavor. Signed by Senator Kowal, myself, Lieutenant Governor Brian Kelly, and Rick Snyder. And I know this isn't the conclusion of your civic service, you're part of the fabric of the city, and I know you'll always be there supporting the economic development and the people of Wixom. Congratulations.
I'm just kind of getting used to it. Trying to see if I fit.
Let me go sit down.
Next, I'd like to introduce County Commissioner Phil Wyper, who has a proclamation to present.
He doesn't strike, just give by the microphone so everybody can hear us. It is a pleasure to be here with Kevin, and I tell you, one of the best things is that him and Linda are always welcoming and always a lot of fun. The conscience in the park every time, he's just great people to be with. He started out, lost the Ford plant, and still always gets a positive attitude and brought Wixom back, and it's here. So on behalf of the county commissioner, I'd like to present to his proclamation. Whereas the wealth of the community can be measured by the hard work of the dedicated public servants such as Mayor Kevin Henley, whose extraordinary service has benefited local residents and the City of Wixom as a whole, whereas largely as a result of his gift for understanding and discussing important issues openly, honestly, and effectively, Mayor Henley, along with the entire Wixom community, supported a safety bike path, road improvement initiative, a police fire and DPW initiative, and the renewal of the Parks and Recreation Initiative, all of which have made the City of Wixom a wonderful place to live, work, play, and rock. Whereas in addition to his countless contributions to the economic health and vitality of Wixom, Mayor Henley also played an important role in downtown build center area improvements that includes a municipal complex with a gazebo, stage, pond, fountains, decorative street lighting, and benches. In 2011, Keep America Beautiful Inc. presented the City of Wixom with presence of board for these improvements. Mayor Henley has also served as the elected official water task force designated, a delegate to the Michigan Municipal League, a delegate to the SEMCOG, and he also owns several businesses including the Wixom-based Conveyall Industrial Supply. So on behalf of the county commissioner, we join with Mayor Henley's family, friends, and colleagues to thank him for his years of service, as well as countless other contributions. Now therefore, Michael J. Dintell, Chairman of the Oakland County Board of Commissioners, together with Commissioners Phil Wyper, Commissioners U.D. Crawford, Commissioners Eileen Colwell, do hereby proclaim special commendation to Mayor Kevin Henley, and wish him all the best in his future endeavors. It has been great.
It's been fun. Thank you. These pictures are for these guys, though. There's some mob. They have them. Our next speaker is Judge David Law, who wants to present a letter to Kevin. I got it mixed up again. Judge Reed is coming.
I said I wanted.
Can't keep them off the floor.
We don't have a fancy plaque. They look smaller budget than the other branches. We wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate you. It's truly been a pleasure and a privilege for us, as the judges, Judge Law and myself, to work with the city council.
Mayor.
You've done some fantastic things for this community. My sister and my mother both choose to make Wixom their home, and in large part it's because it's such a wonderful place to live and work. A large part of that is due to your efforts and your dedication to this community. So congratulations again, and we hope you enjoy your new chapter.
I will. Thank you.
Picture with all three judges, so that'd be great.
Hope I never get a feeding picture.
We got to be covered, too.
Just a couple more things here.
We're gonna start with the flowers right here.
Uh-huh, yes. First lady. First lady, please come up, Linda Henley.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, stay up there. I've got some other stuff here. Let's see. We have our own proclamation here from the City of Wixom, and I'm gonna read it. Whereas Kevin Henley has served as the City of Wixom's mayor for the past ten years and served as councilman for six years prior to being elected mayor, and whereas Kevin Henley has as both Wixom's mayor and member of Wixom's Downtown Development Authority, always been a champion for Wixom's economic development, and whereas Kevin Henley encouraged the City of Wixom to participate in Oakland County's One-Stop Ready Program, and the city has greatly benefited from this partnership, and whereas Kevin Henley was a leader in the development of Wixom's downtown area, and a key reason, the city received a 2011 President's Award from Keep America Beautiful Inc., and whereas during Mayor Henley's tenure, Wixom has been recognized repeatedly for working to foster entrepreneurial growth and economic development in the annual University of Michigan's Dearborn Eye Labs East Cities Study, and whereas three millages were passed during Mayor Henley's tenure, in great part due to his ability to discuss honestly, openly, and effectively important issues and how they affect the City of Wixom, and whereas as a city, as a Wixom councilman and mayor, Kevin Henley has served as an elected official water task force designated, a voting delegate of the Michigan Municipal League, and a delegate to the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, and whereas in addition to serving the City of Wixom's in so many capacities, Kevin Henley runs a number of businesses including Wixom-based Conveyall Industrial Supply Inc., and whereas Kevin Henley has been an outstanding elected leader of Wixom and leaves the community well-positioned for continuing success. Now therefore, the council of the City of Wixom hereby proclaim December 19th, 2017, shall be known and celebrated as Mayor Kevin W. Henley Day, and that this proclamation serves to honor, tribute, and as honor, tribute, gratitude for sixteen years of dedicated service in the City of Wixom. Congratulations. I gotta do all that stuff?
Yeah. Anybody in here in Marion?
We also have a plaque for Mayor Henley, presented to Mayor Kevin W. Henley in grateful recognition of sixteen years of dedicated service for the City of Wixom, December 19th, 2017. I also have this.
We have this.
People who are unfamiliar with this, this is the brick. And the brick goes out in front around the pool area, the pond area. All the employees that we have, retirees and so on, are honored for this, and this is your brick.
My brick. Get it embossed, right?
It's already embossed.
Oh, it's already embossed, okay, but I have to wait till probably spring, eh, to put it in.
We'll get it this spring.
Big brick. Yeah. Guess I had to make another.
Yeah.
There we go.
Deborah Barker would like to come up and make a presentation. Deborah is our Economic Development Director.
I'd just like to present on behalf of the DDA a new downtown Wixom hat, which are available for $15.
Also, Fire Chief Roberts would like to come up and make his presentation. In recognition of your contributions to the community and your support of public safety.
Not a brick. Not a brick. It's a hat. Who weighs forty pounds? Most of you know who Jordan is.
You're officially on call now.
Yeah, so now I can hop in the car with Jordan and come to the fire.
Those are not $15.
Yeah. They're not for sale, are they? That's pretty cool. Thank you, Chief Roberts.
This is normally the time I would ask Kevin if he has a few words, and I'm sure that he does, but at this point, before we do that, I guess I would like to have a call to the public in the event that anybody from the public wishes to come up and say anything or have any comments that are certainly, this is the one where things have to be on point, though. No lead back-up questions. So if anybody would like to come up, please come up and speak to the public.
My address is 3250 Johanna Ware, Wixom, Michigan, 48393. Dear Mayor Henley, thank you for the service, your service to the community of Wixom. I'm very proud of you. Your dedication and devotion has made Wixom a wonderful place to live, and a great place to do business. Very proud of your principles, your integrity, and love for this community. With hard work and partnership from council, we have guided the city through tough years, very tough years, and always maintain the services that are essential to its residents. Beyond that, just take a look around Wixom. We have new construction. New families are moving to Wixom. New families are moving to Wixom. Businesses have been moving into Wixom. Downtown area, a walkable community, and a very special pride that's close to your heart all these years is revitalization of the Ford Motor Plant property that is now the new assembly park. Much to be proud of. You and all the citizens of Wixom can be very proud of your accomplishments that have made our city a great place to live, work, and enjoy. You are leaving the city in good hands, very good hands. Job well done. As you have said to many people retiring from the city, happy trails to you. Well, Mayor, happy trails to you.
Thank you.
Your family looks forward to joining you on that trail. We love you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Welcome to the call of the public. At this point, I will turn it over to Kevin Hankley to ask him if he has a few comments.
I gotta get a drink of water. I think I'll be easy if I sit down. I promise you, we're gonna F8. It looks like I got a long speech, but I don't. I really don't. I'll try and get through this though. Thank you, everybody, for attending tonight. It's been an honor and a privilege for me to serve you for the last ten years as the mayor and before that, six years as a council member. Being mayor has not been a one-person job. I've had these gentlemen here and other council members that have come before them that have been very helpful in assisting myself and working with myself and us working together to have a better Wixom. So first, I'd like to thank my wife Lynda and my family for the support and guidance that they have provided me for so many years. My thanks to all the employees that I've had the privilege to work with through the years and who truly make our city a really great place to live. A special thanks to Kathy Buck and Wendy Brink who have really kept me so well organized and Stacy Banks has done a wonderful job for me as well. So it's, I don't even have three assistants at my office, so it's been great to have these three individuals keep me organized, keep me at the meetings on time and especially like with Wendy and when Vilma was in that position, Vilma did a great job of having my weddings all ready and weddings are important. I think somebody told me the other day, we were asking, I think I've done, I don't know, a couple hundred weddings in ten years in the city, so it's been kind of interesting doing those weddings, but thank you to those individuals who've kept me organized. Also, I'd like to thank our city partners, Suez, for outstanding work with their water treatment program, Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark, who is our partner in engineering, Safebuilt, for the work in the code enforcement with the building department, Carmen Avantini, who assists us greatly in our city planning, Carol Rosati and her firm for their assistance on many of our legal issues and, you know, many others. I know I'm missing some people tonight, but these are always the ones that kind of come to my head real quick and providing us with their expertise and their guidance across the city as we govern the city. I couldn't be prouder as mayor of our outstanding public safety team of police officers, firemen and our EMS, Fire Chief Roberts and Police Chief Ron Moore. It's been a real honor to serve with you, it really has been. I think when you look at our public safety and the service we do, many of you probably don't know this that happened last night, but I stood back and watched you guys last night, Officer McKeig, and my hat's off to you helping that individual. We had a resident, I think he was a resident, that had a wheel, he had a motorized wheelchair, right? And I think they ran out of power and he got stuck over here by the party store in the 7-Eleven and Officer McKeig and our other EMS and firefighters and this was no easy task for these people. This gentleman weighs about 350 pounds and he was having some difficulty with his power scooter and ran out of power. But this is the kind of thing we do, so I watched you guys. You didn't know I was back behind the 7-Eleven watching you guys, but I thought it was pretty interesting to see you dig in the snow out and of course, Jordan shows up and helped you out, but this is the thing we do and this is why I've been proud to be part of the team and be, you know, the face behind you folks because you do a great job. And our emergency firefighters, they were all there and it was interesting to see and watch, so thank you for doing that. I'm getting to the end, I'll be here, I'll be quick. I'm thankful to the many citizens that I've had for accepting volunteers on commissions and people that I've asked to be, to run for council. It's not an easy thing to do to run for council, as many of my council members know, but a lot of volunteers that I've asked to be on committees and commissions and during my ten years mayor, it's been, it's been great to have been working with those folks as well. Again, thanks to all my fellow council members through the years, we've done a great deal of good work together. I leave my post confident that your priority, my priority will remain improving the way of our city as we continue to serve the residents and the businesses of Wixom and I trust that you will do that. In 2007, when it was a very tough year economically, as most of you remember, and it was a difficult time for me to take over as mayor, but we rebounded in an unbelievable way and, let's see here, thanks to the dedication and the strength of our city and its people, we have, we haven't completed everything, but we've had a great rebound. The residents believe in me and electing me to serve as mayor five consecutive times is very humbling. It's very humbling. Wixom were now poised to grow. Now poised to remain, we're poised to grow and remain sustainable. We have a new mayor and Mayor Ziegler and a great council and an excellent city manager. And of course, none of this, of their work would be possible without our city employees who work continually to move our city forward in the, in the work they do on a daily basis. I want to thank all of those who have attended tonight to recognize our accomplishments and especially those from the state level and Oakland County. I appreciate you being here. When I, when I became mayor, I'm almost done. When I became mayor, I said that we would leave no rock unturned and we would be rolling stones and we did that. And I'm truly proud of what we accomplished as a city and I thank, I thank you all. I thank you all for giving me the privilege. I had the opportunity to do this and to do it with all of you, it's been great. And with that, I think it's time for cake, isn't it? We got everybody back? Okay, so we'll resume our meeting and the next item on the agenda be the approval of minutes. The minutes of the December 12, 2017 meeting, actually they'll be approved at the next one, which is this one. Huh? It does say January night, see I'm ODing on the, on the cake here already. All right, having the sugar, okay, so we'll do that next time. Rachel will do that next time. All right, and we, we had a call to the public, like our second call to the public, but I will, this will be a call to the public regarding any agenda items, so the rules for the call of public are as follows. The public shall address the council during the call of public, which will be included on the agenda immediately after correspondence and again, immediately after new business. The first call of public, which is this one, will be limited to agenda items only. A person shall not address the council in excess of five minutes unless the time is extended by a majority vote of the council present. Persons wishing to address the council shall identify themselves and their place of residence and shall state their reason for addressing the council. All comments by the public shall be made directly to the council. Anyone wishing to address the council on the second call of public, or no, this is the first one, any agenda item. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item? Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item? Okay, saying none, I'll close that. Correspondence, we have a letter of resignation from Jeff Keel from our Downtown Development Authority. I'd like to just recognize Jeff for a minute that he did serve for, as I said earlier tonight, one of the individuals that I'd asked to help us and volunteer on the Downtown DDA. He was a member for a number of years and offered a lot of insight and a lot of help into growing and developing the DDA and helping us on the committee get it to where it is today, which was a total change in our DDA and a thought process, so Jeff will be sadly missed and, but he will obviously still be around town and a good individual. Next item on the agenda would be the city managers' reports and that would be the departmental monthly reports for November 2017. Any questions regarding those? No, okay. Consent agenda be the next item. All the items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine by the city council and may act by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member's sole request, in which event the items will be removed from the consent agenda and added to the regular agenda at the end of unfinished or new business. Do I have a motion? Second. I have a motion by Mayor, Deputy Mayor, you know, Deputy Mayor, Mayor Ziegler and seconded by Councilman Resnick. All those in favor, six of five are saying aye. All right, all those opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. We have no unfinished business, under new business, a recommendation to authorize the purchase of office furniture for the Construction and Development Services Department from KNI of Green Bay, Wisconsin at a cost of $30,920.50 and the associated budget amendment. Do I have a motion? Boy, everybody's on that one. I think it was a motion by Councilman Beagle and seconded by Councilman Kennedy. Any discussion on that? Questions, yes, Councilman Beagle?
Thanks, I just wanted to thank Leonardo's Marvel and Granite of Wixom who generously offered to provide the countertop and installation at a cost of $1. We appreciate that, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Beagle and seconded by Councilman Kennedy to accept the recommendation to authorize the purchase of office furniture for the Construction and Development Services Department from KNI of Green Bay, Wisconsin at a cost of $30,920.50 and the associated budget amendment item. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All right, all those opposed? Ayes have it, thank you very much. New business number two, consideration of the introduction of a mandatory ordinance to rezone the property located at 29180 and 29290 Wixom Road, approximately 7.33 acres from M1 Light Industrial to B3 General Commercial, tax parcel number is 2208-10061 and tax parcel number 22-08-100-062 as requested by the property owners Jerry L. and Ruth Ann Helmer. Do I have a motion? Any discussion on that? Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Kennedy and seconded by Councilman Gatto to accept the consideration of the introduction of a mandatory ordinance to rezone the property located at 29180 and 29290 Wixom Road, approximately 7.33 acres from M1 Light Industrial to B3 General Commercial. That is tax parcel number 22-08-100-061 and tax parcel number 22-08-100-062 as requested by the property owners Jerry L. and Ruth Ann Helmer. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Thank you. We had our second call of the public already. City managers, comments, please.
Yeah, a couple of things, Your Honor, that I'd like to draw attention to. We had talked previously about No Shape November fundraising update for the police department. They had a goal of $2,500 to raise for that project. There were little shorts, they extended it to do it again in December, actually, and you'll still see Chief Moore, I don't know if he's here or not, yeah, he's still running around with a furry face. They extended it into December and did achieve their goal and reached $2,588, so congratulations to them for their excellent work in raising those funds to combat cancer. We had a couple of nice things that were provided to the city from Wixom Christian School for the DPW as well as City Hall employees as well as Police and Fire Departments. Great artwork here that was provided by the Wixom Christian School children. I wanted to make that notice to everybody that we had received those. There's some extra ornaments on the Christmas tree that the employees can grab, grab from tomorrow at work. We wanted to say thank you to the kids at the school for that recognition from them. We also had a couple of things as well that I wanted to talk about. We had, we had mentioned at previous meeting that one of our employees in the building department, Vilma Massey, has lost her mother recently and we wanted to extend our condolences, ongoing condolences to her, a very tough time for her. And then the last thing that I wanted to make mention of was closures of city offices for the holiday season coming up. Were to be closed on the 25th and the 26th, Monday and Tuesday of December and then also Monday and Tuesday, the first, first days of the new year on the first and second of January in 2018. City Hall will be closed on those days, just so people can make plans for that. That's all I had this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Council comments. Councilman Smiley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few words about our, our dear mayor. Thank you, Mayor Hankley, for your dedication, hard work, and care to the city of Wixom. You've helped guide Wixom for sixteen years and is a testament to your knowledge and abilities that this town is such a great place to live. Your years of service to this wonderful city is greatly appreciated. Personal note, I thank you for your wisdom and guidance during the first two years of me serving on this council. I learned a great deal watching you and listening to you and I thank you, sir. So thank you, good luck, Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ron? You wanna, there's some, you're in.
There's four cops out there right now.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry.
Councilman Gatto. Seen all the screen in five minutes. I want to also share my condolences for Vilma and her loss and I hope that she found comfort and support from all of her fellow city staff. I know we have a very tight-knit group in the city working for the city. I also want to wish everybody a safe and happy holiday season and a great start to the new year and I also wanted to wish you the best in what's probably going to be just a little baby step back from your engagements in the city as you get to spend more time with your family and travel a bit more, but I know we'll see you around the city for sure and you'll still be on boards and engaged, but likewise, I enjoyed the time learning, sitting next to you for the last two years and we wish you the best.
Good, thank you. Thank you. Councilman Resnick?
All right, I would also like to offer my condolences to Vilma and her family and I know it's going through tough times, but our thoughts and prayers are with you through that. Also wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and then as with a lot of special occasions, my, my family is used to me writing a poem or, or some sort of limerick and I'm going to start off my comments by just a limerick when I was driving in the car I thought about and here it is. There once was a salesman from Jackson who was known as a person of action. He served without fear for sixteen tough years and helped our great city gain traction. And Kevin. You know, we've served together for many years now, you know, starting with the time that I was Parks and Recreation Chair and then as we started the Community Foundation and lastly, the late, the last eight years after I was elected to City Council with you as the mayor. I still remember well our first interaction and with you being the newly-elected mayor, sitting for an hour as I coached you into reciting greetings and wedding vows in the German language for your first wedding performance for a local German couple and then recently instructing you on the traditional tapping of the first keg at Oktoberfest, which falls as an honor to the Burgermeister of the city. We've had some tense times and good times as you led us through some of Wixom's most tumultuous times in history. tumultuous times in history, from the prosperity of the nineties and early 2000s, to the closing of the Ford plant, the long recession, downsizing of the city, the energy park, which had never materialized, to the recent development of the Assembly Park and economic growth. We've had our differences over the years on topics such as wingplows, policies, staffing, taxes, but all the while, you were patient enough to hear and understand my side, and whether or not we found compromise or stood our individual grounds, you always showed respect and we were able to move on. I know that you will find something to do in retirement that will continue your devotion to God, your country, and family, and I know that our friendship will outlast any elected terms. May God bless you and keep you through many long years of hunting, fishing, skiing, grandchildren.
Thank you. Councilman Be?
Thank you. I would like to congratulate Kevin on his sixteen years of devoted service to our city. It's impossible to measure what Kevin has meant to the city of Wixom. You see Kevin at all the city functions, from the countdown to the fireworks, to leading Christmas carols, and the annual arrival of Santa, but that is really only half the story. His strong leadership and dedication to the city, as well as on council, have been the key to the progress and the position that the city has enjoyed and will continue to enjoy. Kevin is always available to answer questions about a current or upcoming issue or just offer some advice or ideas. I can't tell you how much that has meant to me personally. I'm happy to see now that Kevin will be able to kick back with Linda and enjoy his family, especially his grandchildren. Thank you for all you've accomplished. We wish you the best and don't be a stranger.
I won't. Thank you.
And also wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and safe travels wherever you go. Thanks.
Councilman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, thank you for your service to our community. Even though we have difference of opinions, you have taken the time to give your life and your blood to this community. I do appreciate that. I do know that it's tough. You have sacrificed family time, wife time, personal time for our city. The city has grown and been better because of you. It is an accomplishment that you should be very proud of, and I appreciate you taking the time to also help me when we have to discuss certain things. Mr. Mayor, Kevin, thank you very much. God bless you, and may you find happiness in your next step.
Thank you. Is it Deputy Mayor? Is it Mayor? Is it Richard? I think it's just Richard.
I have no comment. You know, I, I was thinking I should sit down and write something, or I should try to formulate some opinions, or drive in the car and think of what I'm going to say and everything, but I tell you, you know, I didn't want to be in a position where I'd be tearing up and reading something, and I'm going to miss you, Kevin. You've meant a lot to me and we've done, I think, a lot together, and your leadership has meant a lot to me and to this council, and you, I think, professionalized the position of mayor of this council, and you, your salesmanship ability has shown through in your various states of the city speeches, and the leadership that you've shown, as was written in the proclamations. You know, you pushed those, those things through with the millages, you know, with your personality and your way of explaining what the situation was, and, and your leadership is what, what did that, frankly. You're a true leader and you've done a lot for the city. I really appreciate it, and congratulations, and we'll be seeing you around a lot. It's not goodbye, so see you later.
See you later. No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I have another three or four-page speech. No, I don't. Just thanks to my fellow council members. Again, it's been, it's been great, and it's been really wonderful being here tonight and having everybody come, and I have a lot of recognition, but like I said, it's not me. It's this council, it's these employees, it's our city manager, it's our police and fire, it's everybody that's been part of the team to do what we get done for really what's the residents and the business owners of this community, and, and that's what makes the wheel turn. It's not any one person. Yeah, somebody's, you know, somebody's got to lead the orchestra, but you know, still everybody's got to play the instrument, and that's, that's what we do. We all play the instrument. We get done what needs to be gotten done for our residents, and that's what's made this a unique community, and why I've stayed here, my family's stayed here since, you know, 1990 when we moved in here, so it's been great, and it's been really a learning opportunity for me. Somebody asked me, I think it was the pastor up the street, I can't remember his name, but he said to me one time, he goes, "What perplexed you to, to get into public service or to become a politician?" I said, "Well, first I want to tell you I'm not a politician." He said, "I, I serve the public is what I do," and that's what we do, is we serve the public, and don't any of us ever lose sight of that. That's what we're here to do, is to serve the public, but I, but I said to him, really, I said, "The true part of it is, is that anybody can be a taker, okay? Everybody can always take things and be a taker, but what I, what I leave you as your mayor is be a giver, and a lot of you have given to this community in, in a lot of different ways, in volunteering, and our employees, and a lot of people that volunteered for the various different boards and commissions. Be givers, and life will, will pay you back ten times." And with that, Merry Christmas to everybody, and can I get a motion to adjourn? Got a motion by Councilman Beagle and seconded by Councilman Resnick to adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Merry Christmas. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Let's go get a beer.